We open our commissioner meeting for July second, twenty twenty five. Craig, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
My apologies. Of the United States of America. In the republic where it stands. One nation under God. In the civil law, liberty and justice for all.
Any approval of payroll and longevity for six twenty twenty five? And they were able to get seven three twenty five.
Also.
I have a motion from Steve and a second from Rob. All those in favor say aye. Uh, people claims for seven two twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. I'll say.
I have a motion from Rob and a second from Steve to approve the claims. All those in favor say aye. We have a credit card claim for nine hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Nine hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Big motion. So.
Motion from Steve, second from Rob. All those in favor say aye. We have an ambulance ride off for May of twenty twenty five in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Seven one five two four.
I'm at that motion. I'll say.
I have a motion from Rob and a second from Steve to approve the ambulance ride offs. All those in favor say aye. To spare me.
I can go ahead. You have a call. So. I'm with uh, assist the dot com.
Um, this was the resolution that we asked. Linda to take a look at last meeting. I actually prepared it in reverse. Still weren't there, I will.
Motion to approve the resolution. Yeah.
A motion from Rob and a second from Steve through the VMS resolution. The number will be. On five two seven, or we. Now, if you guys are pregnant, definitely. So there's no, so is it twenty twenty-five dash seven dash? Three twenty-five. Yeah. All of them favorite that. Um, Sharon is not very, no, she reached out to us. She had spoken with me as well. Um, I just. Had her go ahead and get this put on the agenda. Um. Just so it reflects in the minutes that N dot had gotten a call to purr about the. Intersection that they're working at, at people being on a stay with fourteen. Um. There are, I believe, fourteen days past. Don't call me on actual number, but I think it's a couple weeks. Um, as of right now, we'll just let her know that. Use of the county roads, the way that they have to turn it around. To turn traffic. May impact one going south and one going north. Um. But they will keep in contact with her as they progress, but they're hoping that it doesn't take too long because now they're on. So. I just wanted to keep that on there, or if she had to bring that up at our next meeting. Um, Mark.
Main thing I got is, uh. I want you guys to remember this. Probably. George A. The three units on top that we have a. From the six tons and the only thing working now is. It was, when it was put in, it was boiler and air conditioning. Now it's just a boiler. Air conditioner quit working, I don't know, years ago probably. So I got a, um. An estimate for, uh. Engineering. To put the three, there's three units that need to be replaced.
Do we get pre-estimates?
Just, this is just the engineering part.
Okay.
So this is the only company that would come out. That I, that kind of hold three of them. This is the only one that. And that the cost was seventy-five hundred, which I thought was pretty cheap. So what they do is they go in, they, they. They actually set it up. They run electric. They tell you where to put the electric and everything, so. But the.
They don't set it up. They just give you the plan.
Right. They're giving you the plans, what they're doing, yeah. What's that? We hire somebody. That's what their cost is gonna be. But he's just setting the, the plans up right now. Tells you where to run the electric, what it's gonna need for power and stuff like that.
How old is this to put on that?
That was sixties. It's, 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 when the building was, was put up, that's what it was. And I had, uh, we had an air conditioning guy. Come and he told me, he says, Mark, this thing breaks, we can't fix it. They can replace motors and stuff, but. The boiler part is, you know, it's from sixty-two, so.
Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted me to go ahead with the engineering part. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to replace these. I mean, it's. Well. What this is. He comes in and, and tells you where the electric's gonna be run. If there's gas lines gotta be moved, he comes in and. And sets the thing up. After this, after he gets the plans going, then we take it to a contractor. Built by the units and. That'll be a. He's thinking thirty thousand apiece for the units. And then I don't know what it'll be for, put it in, but. It's gonna be costly.
Look, I guess to Steve's question is, why, why can't we hire? Get three different contractors to look at it, seven to seventy-five hundred and have them look at it?
Well, we actually need this engineering thing to, they're gonna tell. We can have a guy come in and, and they'll put it in, and he might put the electric wrong or something. So what this guy does is he runs. Looks over the plans of the building. I give him the plans. And, uh, he'll tell you where the electric goes, what power you need. Well, they're gonna, actually, the units are gonna be on the ground. They're not gonna be on the roof anymore. So what he's doing is setting up the plan is what he's doing.
I don't even. Cause he's a HVAC guy.
I mean, we had, I've had two guys come out, HVAC guys, and they both said we need engineering for the. For the plant, for the electric, I mean. I just don't wanna put something in here, and then I'd be wrong.
I, I understand, uh.
Something about money for some side issue. That's, what's.
When, before I came, I think Jacob had it set up to where. I think he was gonna have a company come in and they were gonna charge seventy-five thousand. For the engineering part, so.
Rob. Yeah, you have the engineering. We put it out to fit into different electrical contractors. It's been at the status. Or.
So basically, oh, what you're saying is, these people are gonna design the system and say whatever spec needs to be.
Correct.
And then that, I, I get what you're saying, uh.
And you have a looking at the budget, so.
It should be in the George A budget, I think, I believe.
I mean, because every time I'm looking at money for the week, we've been taking twenty-five percent out of. Our same building, uh, for maintenance, the help. The goal was not to touch it, but who's gonna have to start touching it, because it's.
So then does he, we need a motion from us to. Tell him that the engineering, and the cost is managed with you, but. And then he's gonna have to go to council, or that's just gonna come, that cost?
We'll have to do conditional.
Okay.
So yeah.
Make motion. Uh. Make motion. Any, any more questions? Make the motion and give the motion.
Brother Georgia.
I'll say.
First thing, do you?
So I have a motion from Steve and a second from Rob to approve the superior engineering. Uh, for seventy-five hundred for the engineering for George A and my office. All those in favor say aye. Right. And then you can make copies of that.
You can have that, yeah. And I sent Linda the one already, so.
And then the courthouse LG system, then I was to that stuff. So you have to just be.
Right. So I don't know how you guys wanna, how you guys wanna go with that. Do you wanna still put it in the paper, or do you wanna break it up?
No matter what, it's still gonna have to go on the paper. I understand what.
What they did before.
You know, it was free, but moving forward, it's just, it's gotta be advertised, it needs to be. By the property.
Okay. So. How soon do we wanna do this? Because we're, we're running out of time, because. Here's what's gonna happen. We're, if we don't order it pretty soon. We're gonna be stuck with the new. Freon that's, that's propane based. And this is a whole different, because there's more sensors on this, on the new one. Being as flammable, you gotta, it's just, you don't wanna buy a car the first year it comes out because of the, let them work the cakes out. So if we stay with the four-ten, the, the. We're gonna be much better off.
My, I just told me the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but we have a limited time, because we're gonna have to. If we get to okay, I mean, we're gonna have to order this stuff. Before they quit making it.
There will be notice that this one have to go out to the paper. Um, and I know you've been in contact with Linda, but. I also asked Matt to kind of. Help you with that as well, and to be, to be spoken with you about that, so. We need to get that in paper correctly and start getting. Started in following.
Yeah.
Because at this point. That's, that's the holdup. The holdup is you getting not noticed to better and getting not sent.
Okay.
Right.
So, um. The other thing is the sheriff's doors are all working now. We had a few hiccups, but everything's good now.
Good. I appreciate you being on that.
Yeah.
All right, I'll get on that and, uh, and get going on it then.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Okay.
He's gonna help you with the specs.
Okay.
Cool. Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Wanna pass this out and then I'll, I'll get to this. So last week I attended the IDVA count, uh, conference, which is the Indiana Department Veterans Affairs Conference. So basically, all county veteran services officers have to attend this. We have to get what's called CEUs. Continued education units. So a couple of things that come out of that was. The property tax, if you've been following the state legislature, the property tax was a nightmare. Uh, what they were looking at doing originally. For the veterans was giving them credits. But then. Uh, the American Legion, the DAV, and all the other associations got together. And they went back and reverted back to the old plan. So, um, another thing that they did was, they brought up is. The IDV, uh, website is very user friendly. So I talked to, uh, Jody, so we, we're gonna try and get that uploaded. To, uh, to the VSO webpage. It's very, I mean, I know a lot of places, websites are not very user friendly. This is. There's a lot of questions that veterans will ask me that they can click on there. The biggest thing is they can go down to, it's called the Indiana two-one-one. And then they can find other services and resources out there that will help them, uh, you know, because we're, we're limited. To our community resources. To really Ja- Jasper Newton County. So what I handed you was. Sorry, my sinuses with everything's killing me today. Uh, the, uh, economic impact for veterans in Indiana. So you see to the left there, the veteran population, we, uh, you can click on, and you can find this on the, uh, IDVA webpage, it's under transparency. Uh, Newton County. So right now. They're tracking that we have nine hundred seventy-six veterans in Newton County. Now, the question is. How they track, how do they come up with that number? No one could really give me an answer, but I think it's through the BMV. Um. What, the system I use is called Vetrespec, it's, uh, because, uh, worse, I'm accredited through the American Legion. So of those nine hundred seventy-six, when I came in, there was probably seventy-eight to eighty-two in Vetrespec. Now we're, uh, up to one eighty-five. Um, so you can see there's a larger gap there, but that could, could mean that a person come out of the military and. They took care of everything through the VA. Uh, there, they didn't come into our office, or they, um, went to DAV, or they went to VFW, or. Another, uh, association. But you can see here which, what, how much money has been brought to the county. Um, I was pretty stunned with that. If you look at that total compensation, uh, a little over, if I'm reading, and I was a history teacher, not a math teacher, so. Uh, a little over, it's, it's like three million dollars, and you can see in compensation and pension. That, that means that from disability or pensions that, and I wouldn't get into all the VA, uh, link on that. Education, uh, vo have, uh, education and vote. Uh. Vocational rehab. Medicare. Then insurance and indemnity, indemnities, if I can talk. So we, so I was blown away how much money actually is coming into the county from the VA. Um, so with that, you can also see that, um. Thirty-eight percent of our workforce are veterans. But if you look down below, you can see why, because, uh, the most of veterans in our community are Vietnam veterans, which are seventy-five years and older. Or they fall into, uh, global war on terrorism. Which are individuals like me from the age of sixty-five, fifty-five. To sixty-four. So you can see that, uh, the economic impact, this is something new. Uh, I just had this explained to me, so hopefully I got everything right on it. But I wanted to give that to you guys, so you can see exactly, um. Wha- what's going on there with that. Um. So, uh, with that being said, I know the office now, when I, when I was hired in, I, uh, they want, uh, they wanted me to come in full-time. I wanted, I didn't want full-time, I wanted part-time, and Tammy knows this, she was there through all that. Um. The office now is getting pretty busy for twenty hours. Yesterday I was off, um, still filled with three or four phone calls and took care of some things. So I think it's something maybe for you guys to really consider moving forward. Is maybe making this position a full-time. That's not for me. Um, at the end of the year, I am retiring. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be totally done. So it might be a good idea. You know, for you guys to look at that and for that transition. Um. It's, uh, but I wanted to give you guys enough time. The previous commissioners, current commissioners, previous council, current council. Everyone has been totally wonderful to me. Uh, this is a, a tough decision, but. I'll be sixty-three in a, in a month and a half, and, um. I've worked two and three jobs since I was nine years old. So. I'm gonna be a little selfish. I got my, my bucket list that when I semi-retired three years ago, that has not had one thing marked off. So, um, so, um. I wanted to give you guys plenty, plenty of time. If you want, I don't, we could, I can. Assist in a exit strategy for me, or there's been so many people. That everyone that's been involved in moving this office forward. Um, I'd hate to see it revert back. Um. Bob Gonsi told me one time, he said, always leave the woodpile higher. When you leave than when you got there, and I think we have done that. Um, so. That's one reason. I, I thank you guys. I'm not going away in the next thirty days, but, uh, like I said, I wanna give you guys enough opportunity. Uh, for, for my exit and, uh. Try to do my best Ronald Reagan impersonation and write off in the sunset, so, but, uh.
Thank you. Thank you for the show.
Well, but, uh, I like. Well, thank you. Uh. I've got a couple people that I have in mind, but I have not spoke to anyone. Um, um, and I can talk to you guys. Contact me, I, you know, we can, if you wanna meet sometime, it's the four of us. Um, and it's, it's, you know, when I first came in, it had been vacant, what, Tammy, for over a year. I was drinking from a fire hose. I may have, it was, I mean, it was, it was crazy. And with, when you're talking about government, as you guys know, it, it changes every day. Uh, the PAC Act was, uh, was greatly. Um, changed the VA system. Um. And, uh, there, they had to hire a lot of people. Consequently, there are. They're making some administrative mistakes and things along those lines, so. But, um, just, um, you know, keep me, uh, you know, keep me updated on what, how you guys wanna move forward on that. And once again, I sincerely thank you for all your support while I've been in this position.
Yeah, we'll be setting up, um, our workshop for budget hearings and stuff, so that may be a good time, too.
Okay, yeah, I have all that. I've submitted all that, and that, my budget. You know, is not, is not very big on that, so.
Well, because we'll be just meeting with our department.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right, all right, thank you.
But that is always on budget at the. At all time, we, we don't pay them before time, but we figure it out, so. It's not the exercise, it's just a lot, yes.
Uh, so I'll pop back up to building plan and motion. Morning.
Morning.
Stop there. Please stop there.
Uh, we have a check-in account with the building department. And the previous commissioner is still on that check-in account, ending in six-one-zero. So I need, I need to be added on to that checking account in order to reimburse the county for building permits and other fees and stuff. Um, so we need to remove Ms. Cicero off that count and add me onto the account.
And you do that right in twelve minutes?
Uh, they need to, they have to have it in minutes. This is something that they do on this one, because, uh, the Kentland Bank, correct? So we're, we're, we just passed one flock of minutes. We did the credit problem, but they didn't accept it or five. And then I will make a motion to remove Daisy Cicero from the Kentland bank account, the building department. And to add the C Vanderbor to that.
So. That's a question. Motion for me second.
We have all those in favor, say aye. Yeah, that's it.
That, yeah.
We're, we're putting off fires as we go along and we're in the process, but yeah, we're, we're still moving forward, so.
Thank you. Yep. Mike. Yeah.
Oh. If you finish up with the building mission. So we get not fencing. Hopefully. Uh, tomorrow or next week, so. And that, when you're last week, what's it? When you're last week, it's.
Sharon.
Uh, all thing I have is that the chase vehicle should be done in the next day or two. I got an email from Ray over at D and Fourth and Designs. Uh, I talked with our state brass, he should be out to inspect it next week to get that in service, and then also next week I'm going out to pick up the launch of Peter Randall. Get some vehicles moving in and out, uh, and I'm gonna get with Tammy and get all of our capital assets updated, so.
Move forward.
And we passed that resolution.
Oh, okay.
So. All right, thank you. I don't know if that's what you want to do as contacts, too. Oh, yeah, we can do that. Um, yeah. Through IC for Tammy, well, Tammy, right, um. They renegotiated the back lines for the new dispatch and for soft base. One of those, those shoes up there, those.
There's a break soon.
But they're all compact, so we have to. At some time, I'm excited. There it is.
This is good, I'm good.
I think after, with the south base opening at some of the land, we were able to bring this on, but then. The new dispatch.
If I do see, if I'm done, Tammy says it's good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll say.
I have a motion from Steve and a second from Rob to approve the, I will after that. The back line. Negotiations for new dispatches nowadays. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
That was a try, you know?
Yeah, I just moved it outside. I'll show you later. Now, what is getting ready for fair?
I am. Well, I just got a couple, a couple quick things. So Earth Night is next week at the fair, so I will be attending again and have information and things and activities to hand out at my table. And then the household hazard and waste event will be on August sixteenth. At the Newt County Highway Garage, and there will be a direct mailer that goes out to everybody again this year. It's getting updated, but that will be going now, so everyone will know what they can bring and what they can't bring, so that's. And I'm still waiting on the contracts, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna, I'll, you know, that's what I'm. Well.
Though, there was an investigation into what we spoke about their Lake Village. Uh, situation.
Right.
People from the dashboard. Numbers.
Okay. And. I'd say get clarification, so the paperwork that George Davis had brought in at the last meeting that we asked him to look over, I. Think you have, I have to sign it, right?
To release the bond.
Yes. I have that absurd, what they've said. Okay, can we just make a note so I don't forget that? Otherwise I don't forget. Thank you. Um. So yeah, so old business. I just had Jovi keep the village. Project on there just in place. Um, so do you want us to keep that on for our next meeting as well? Okay. Um. Carbon head commissioners workshop budget hearing, so we need to get with our department as. This is. And it's up to you all, how you. Wanna do it Monday, we're gonna do it, break it up.
Face.
Two. So our next scheduled meeting is the sixth, two.
I can tell you the weekend, July twenty-first. I, I have time, thanks.
Okay.
Post on things by hands, that whole shot, this is.
G O P I.
Oh, that is, yeah, that may, yeah. Okay. We'll be soon. Also next week in the file, just because if I change numbers, the thing. Portion left to make a tally. But actually.
At least to get out of it soon.
And as soon as she can do it is. The eight, eight times the fourth is a holiday, so that's doing this. So do you want to go for that?
So do you wanna go for the night for Wednesday? One starter gate. Because then we'll have. Yes, so we'll have the building department. We'll have BMA. We'll have EMS. We'll have highlight. We'll have maintenance. We'll have veteran service officer. And then Diane, will you, perhaps we, do we need with?
They, they have the department tab, or? They haven't in the past for recycling, but if you want me to, I can. Four percent ahead, I, if there's, I always come so.
You submit.
Yeah, here, but I, I want me to do that.
I need it, so when you, you guys understood. I got all those, right? Alright, so I have Amy and Stara. I guess we can stuff that more, if we have to break them up, if we feel we have to break them up.
Yeah, put those on and you just recess. I say, Pam, I used to do a message to that. But if it goes on, you just recess and you.
Alright, so. Why nine, eight AM?
No, just, uh, the assessor and I, she has rolled real property and personal property, so I will be sending the, reading out the DLG up, we balance. Uh, I have received notification, um. We might not meet the August first deadline, I'm really close, but with the changes of deductions, I've been told I'm at a halt. Um, so until they get that figured out and then I send my stuff off to, uh, Figurati for the neutralization, tech neutralization. I'm hoping that the way legislation change, we're at a halt, so. Didn't even got it all, so I'm just, I'm at our deadline, so. Can't say company without staff, I mean, but complete without staff. Now can.